Good morning, everybody. Alrighty, starting day 11 study stream today. We've got four different things on the docket for today, today's agenda. So we're gonna start with the hand reading practice as always. Then we'll take a look at a Facebook question that I posted yesterday. About getting aggressive with flopped flush draw out of position and heads up two bet pots. Uh, we'll also get into lessons, lessons learned from the Leakbuster webpage called Poker Tracker 4 Filter List. I'll show you that in a little bit. And uh, we'll dive into the biggest leak from that list that I have. So we'll take a look at the list, assess um, assess, assess what each of those filters tells me. And then pick out the worst leak and dive into fixing that one and create some um, uh, like action steps or action items to do starting today with my very next session. Dive into biggest leak. And devise action stamps. Let me add that here cuz I didn't. Cool. So that's what we're doing today. We're gonna start off with a hand reading practice as always. And the reason why I continually do these hand reading practices is because I want you to do that exact same. The more hand reading that you do, the better off, like seriously, the better off your hand reading skills in game are gonna be. You're gonna understand your opponent so much more. You're gonna have a better uh, like visualization of ranges. For all, all different kinds of ranges pre-flop, you know. You'll, you'll visualize if you do a lot of hand reading on two bet calling ranges, then you'll be able to visualize those very well. Um, if you do hand reading on three bet hands, if you do hand reading on open raises and you were the caller. Whatever the case is, the more you study hand uh, the more you hand read practice, the better you'll get with ranges and ranging people through the streets in game as well. Because you're off the felt practice, it actually goes towards your on the felt practice as well. Like whatever you do off the felt kinda works his way into your brain. And then when you're resting, your subconscious is working on it. It's thinking about all the things that you studied. As your subconscious does that, it's gonna naturally just start flowing into your in-session work, your, your game, game time work, you know? So it is very important, let's see here, anybody? Nobody in the chat just yet, or nobody following yet, but I'm sure some people are watching this after the fact. Thank you very much. So let's go to some, you know? Since um, we're gonna be pulling this up so much, I don't need to show you this stuff over and over again. So saw showdown hands right here. Bam, 133. Um, so we're doing pretty good when we saw showdown. Uh, let's see here. Queen eight suited, I think was the last one. Let's increase this to see all the positions. Okay. Queen eight suited right there. King deuce, that's only a eight big blind pot, or I lost eight big blinds. Check, bet, call, and a check. Uh, let's not do that. Let's go to some small blind hands here. Let's see if we can't find ones with some good action. I don't scroll all the way to the right because I don't wanna see. Uh, let's see here. Bet, 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 check, call, bet. Uh, well, this one has two streets of betting, so let's see what happens right here for sure. We lost a full stack uh, on this hand, so ace ten suited. Uh, so looks like we're gonna be playing out of position of course cuz we're in the small blind. Here's the button. Right there. Clubs, right? So first off, ace ten of clubs, let's just take a look at this hand. Is this worth uh, three bet squeezing or uh, just calling out of the small blind? So ace ten suited itself. Well, ace ten suited hits the flop 38% of the time. Uh, good draws or top pair or better. So I think it is definitely a good hand to see the flop with. We don't want to see the flop right here. We'd prefer to make a three bet steal or three bet squeeze steal. And uh, just, just take the pot down by doing so, we would win a dollar fifty, a six dollar, a six dollar, a six big blind pot right here by taking it down. So it's definitely something worth doing, just taking this puppy down right now. Uh, and it is a good hand. And then let's see ace ten suited. Let's just see it against the opener's range. Hmm, his calling range is pretty wide. Let's see what he calls on the button. 29%, so he's got a really wide calling range. Let's take a look at our range. It's gonna be good versus his 30% range for sure. Let's take a look at his opening range, which is in the cutoff 31%. Let's, it's about his range, 25% or so, but he has a lot of aces in his range. All these good aces, pocket kings, queens, jacks. He probably doesn't. He is bluffzilla after all, he would be three betting a lot, um, possibly. Uh, let's see here. So he has this range, we could just say, I mean, we can even take this off and put all these aces, which are, which we beat all those aces, which is good to add to his range. Um, and so yeah, let's just say this is, you know, roughly 24%. Our hand right here has 56%. So if, if we do bet and he does decide to call, then what does he call with here? Let's take away some of the weaker hands. He folds the three bets only 33% of the time. So... Let's take away that, let's keep in, let's take these ones out. Sometimes people fold those, but then they'll stay in with these to catch that miracle uh, real hand, you know? With the ace three or whatever. So let's say he is calling. He folds only 33% of the time. It's a small sample, but let's say he's calling here. Yeah, let's just stick with this. So he, he started with a 24% range. He's continuing with about 8%, which is one-third of the time. Um, you know, he folds only 33%. Oh, actually, in that instance, he's continuing 66, but let's say he's continuing, continuing against three bets a little less. Especially because we're three betting out of position. So let's say he's continuing um, with 33% of his range right here. And uh, we've got the ace ten now versus this continuance range, we're still at 42%. We can, we can, if we hit an ace on the flop, he only has one, two, three, four, four hands that are better than us. One, two, three, four, five, six hands that we beat. So we beat 60% of all the different aces in his range. We beat all these pocket pairs if we hit an ace. We beat all of these if we hit an ace. He could have some kind of a draw of course, but if we hit our ace, we're still quite ahead of, of most of his range if we hit. So let's just see a, a random flop. Let's just take this and make that an ace. So on that ace high flop, we're now 59%. Even though he does have some jacks, he has ace jack in his range as well. He has all these other weaker aces, all these other pairs that we suddenly beat. So on an ace high flop, we're, we're uh, we're not bummed out on an ace high flop. You know, we have a pretty good chance at uh, uh, beating him here. But let's see what happens. We, good, we decided to throw out. So if you look at that sizing, it's a little over or a little under six times the raise. Well, a standard in most of these games is three big blinds, right? They raised a 75 cents, raised a 75, called a 75. In this instance, or in that instance, my normal three bet squeeze would be $3 or $3.25. So I just made it the normal sizing. Sure, it's six times their raise, but their raise is so small, it feels really weak and bluffy. I want to get them to fold anyway. Um, and he seems really weak for just calling 56 cents. He could be, there are so many suited connectors in suited hands that he's calling here, that he's easily folding. Uh, or that he should fold, but maybe he'll call with position. Let's see here. Uh, and so he calls and then he folds. Okay, great, so the original opener decided to call. Did I clear that range? Aw, darn it, I did. So uh, let's put that back again. Okay, so 25%. Let's say that um, he opened with this right here. Eh, we can take away those hands, maybe not even these ones he's opening with, right? So we have the ace ten suited versus his opening range. Great, we have 54%, very good hand, good equity right here at the, in this instance. Uh, but he decided to bet and then call. What does he call our raise with? Let's take out, because he only folds 33% of the time, let's give him roughly uh, let's give him roughly 45% continuance or so. Uh, he normally continues 67%. Actually, let's go 40%. So what is 40% times 252 combos uh? Well, it's 25 times four, 100. So he should be 252 times point two, uh, 252 times point four. So we wanna get him down to about 100 combos a hand, so let's find 100 combos. There are decently strong combos here of course. Hello, anybody in the chat? I see one person following. Good to see you here, whoever you are. So let's cut this down, put him down to 100 combos that he would likely call. Let's get rid of all these gappers, even the king jack. Let's take out the king, queen offsuit. We're at 125 combos. Um, let's say he's calling the jack ten. People like to play that. He is in position after all. Pocket sevens, he can control the pot. These ones all feel really weak to most players. Ace ten, ace jack, let's say it's ace queen, we're at 100 combos. Hmm, yeah, let's take out the ace jack and then let's take out these two right here. Take that out. Ace eight. Keep the ace jack, so it's a little bit over 100 combos. 98, okay, this is it right here. Let's keep him at 98 combos. So he is continuing with 8% of hands versus us pre-flop. This is our um, our equity. We have 43% right now. Um, so this is basically that same range I chose before, you know? So right now, things are looking pretty good for us. We have a decent equity against him. We are out of position though, which is a bad thing. So deuce, jack, five, club, club, diamond. Uh, so on this flop, sure, we didn't hit a pair. He still has plenty of pairs in his range that currently beat us, but we got that flush draw, which actually the flush draw with the one over card puts us at 53% equity. So this is a really good hand right now. Um, a good enough hand definitely to continue. We are not folding at this point. So we bet 425, which is roughly two-thirds pot. A little bit under two-thirds pot, so I probably hit the two-thirds pot, scrolled down one on it. So we've got the flush draw, we decided to bet. What does he do? Hmm, he calls, so what calls on this board? Um, there's nothing really all that scary for him because we three bet pre, if he has a set. Uh, sure, we might catch a flush on him, but he doesn't, he can't put us automatically on a flush draw. So with his sets, um, he's probably just calling right here in order to string us along. So we're gonna keep sets in his calling range. His two pair doesn't have any over pairs right now. Uh, 15 combos, which are all the aces, kings and queens, which are the best. Now, this flop isn't super wet. He can control the pot and he can slow play for just one street and then sock it to us in the future. But the question is, would this player have? Oh, you know something? Ooh, I screwed this up. He's just calling, right? He four bets at 20%. I screwed this up. So our hand, him pre-flop. Let's take aces and kings cuz I think those are four betting. Queens, probably four betting there. Uh, we can actually just give it a wait. Let's give it a weight of 50%. Half the time he four bets, half the time he doesn't. Um, let's say he's calling with his ace kings right here. And so that's it. So we removed those hands. So what we want to do is add some hands back in to give him back to 100 combos. Cuz we think that's how often he continues. Pocket sixes. Great, yeah. So this is 40% continuing um, with his opening range. And I think that's pretty good right there. I'm good with that. I can't see anything that I want to add to his range. So already, because it's a four bet pot, we've narrowed him pre-flop pretty darn good right here. Um, ace ten on that. And then what was the deuce, jack, five? Great, so now that we've narrowed his range a little bit, eh, we still have 52% equity. Taking the aces and kings out didn't change too much. So his sets, he's calling our bet in position. He's doing that with sets. Two pair, doesn't have any over pairs. Uh, just three combos of queens, that's it. I think those are, uh, those are calling. They aren't too scared on this flop and we could have aces or kings. And we still have aces or kings in our range. He might just be calling with the queens right there. Top pairs, um, it's just a weak jack. I think he's calling one street. He does have position on us. It's a really good sized bet. It's 16, it's almost 17 big blinds we bet. So I think it's possible he could call right there. Let's see what happens. Uh, pocket pair below top pair? I think at this point in a four bet pot, uh, or in a three bet pot. Um, tens, nines, eights? Let's give them one street to call. Let's see what happens on the next street. Middle pairs are folding, da-da-da. Actually, no, let's not. Let's take out eights, sevens, sixes cuz they don't have any kind of a draw, no backdoor draw or anything. Um, let's take out nines, but he has just below top pair. We could be doing this with ace king, ace queen, um, pocket nine c betting. And so let's, let's say his tens, he'll stay in with tens. So just one hand he's staying in with. Alright, got some more people joining. Thank you very much for joining, everybody. Uh, let's see here. Um, so we narrowed down some of his pocket pair below top pair. Middle pair right here. Um, folding, weak pair fold, ace hair, da-da-fold. Cuz my bet size is so big, 17 big blinds, he's giving up this hand. His flush draw only one, the king, queen suited, two overs with the flush draw? Yeah, he's staying in here. Open ended, nothing. Gut shots, ace three, ace four? Um, yeah, possibly gut shots with a two-card backdoor flush. So I have the club, so he can't have, you know, ace five with a, a club flush draw. But he can have an ace four, an ace three, an ace deuce of diamonds right now. So let's... Oh, he's also got all those other just regular backdoor flushes. Let's keep those in for one street. Let's see what he does. Some of them are, they're, they're all ace high, ace high hands as well. Um, yeah, so keeping those in keeps the gut shots in as well cuz it's included, so we won't uh, put that. And then flush draw plus one over card, oh, we've already got that in, yeah. So we started him off at 100 combos. If you take away the board, take away our hand, um, he's now, we have him filtered down to 33 combos, which is pretty darn narrow. Um, but let's see what happens. So I think that's it. Oh, against this narrowed range, he now has, oh, he's beating us just barely 52% to our 48% because we got that nut flush draw on a non-paired board. Ooh, the four comes, so that completes one of his backdoor flush draws. The ace three suited to a straight. And uh, it doesn't promote us as well, promote our hand in any way. Uh, da-da-da-da, four spades. So let's take off that filter there. So um, uh, at this point, four spades hits. Our equity goes down quite drastically to 35 because we only have one card to come for our flushed star, for our, for our over card as well. Over card ace hitting, you know? So um, uh, things just aren't so pretty for us right now. But that doesn't mean we should give up on the hand. This is still a really good chance to do something. Let's see what we do. Holy cow, I'd go ahead and three bet shove right here. So what are we getting? We have a bluff of course. What are we getting to fold? When you're betting, um, let me see. 1749. Plus 17.49, the size of his call, plus the pot, 1531. We're, we're betting 1749. Actually, I shouldn't do that because we're not assuming he's gonna call. So we're betting 1749 plus 1531. We're betting 1749 to win a pot of 3280 total. So 1749 divided by 3280. We need our bet to work 53% of the time. So let's take a look at his combos and is he folding uh, half of his hands basically to our bet? Uh, so he has 92 combos right now. Let me write this down. So let's see here. Um, 92 combos. No, I'm sorry, he has 33 combos. So we need to get rid of... Uh, we need him to fold 52%. So 33 times point five two equals 17. We need him to fold 17 combos. So he needs to be down to 16 combos in his continuance range. What is he continuing with against our uh, uh, against our, our shove here? He's continuing with a straight, ace three of course. He's continuing with his set for sure. His two pair, none, none of them. His over pairs, uh, which is just the pocket queens? I think on this four of four on the turn, he's not too scared. Um, he could possibly continue with his over pairs. I would say so. I mean, he just called the flop with an over pair. We've gotta, we've gotta assume he'll call again with an over pair. Now his top pair hands, at this point with my shove, 15 combos. Is he calling with all of these top pairs? Jack ten, I don't think. Queen jack, I don't think is calling. But ace jack, quite possibly because of the kicker. Who knows if he's thinking that we could have queen jack or king jack ourselves and his ace jack would play? But it's possible that he would call these, so let's put that in his range right there. Uh, pocket pair, everything else is folding. Uh, flush draws folding, open and a straight draw. So those are folding as well. Yeah, so he's continuing with 16 hands right here. All the hands that he continues beat us, but we do have a redraw. So you can see we have 25% equity here. So we needed him to fold. We needed him to fold 17 and he folds 17. So he actually, our bet is break even right here. Our shove. We could've slow played this, but then, not slow played, we could've checked here and then he would've simply um... With quite a bit of his range, I think if we showed weakness on this turn, he probably would've shoved just to take it down. Is my guess at least. And then so we would've just, just folded against shoves. Our bet here gives us some fold equity and it still gives us a chance to win because we're all in, we can't fold before the river. So we can still hit our draw. We're not um, we're not losing our drawing equity by check folding here, you know? So we're giving ourselves the best chance to win. It's a break even bet right now. And then so I don't, I can't fault myself for this at all. Um, just wish it would've played out differently. He calls of course, what does he have? The pocket jacks. Okay, yeah, so he had, like, look at that. We started at 100 combos pre-flop. We narrowed him down all the way to 16, so we took away 84% of his range and we were successful in that range. So this was a, a double barrel bluff. Double barrel semi bluff, that didn't work out right here. What a shame. Uh, ace ten suited. So it was a failure, I'm sorry, a failed hand, but it was a successful... Uh, successful hand reading exercise. So we're good six out of nine times so far for the series, so 67%. I'm happy with that. Um, what can we say about this failed? Double barrel bluff, but break even, um, all in on turn. Good work. Yep, good work. Okay, cool being, so some decent hand reading practice right there. I like that, we did a good job. I feel that we did a good job there. Let's close that. So we'll get back into that database, database in just a little bit. Let's first look at, what was that agenda here? We don't wanna go to Facebook question first. Okay, so yesterday we were talking about... Yesterday we were talking about, um, I'm just playing too passively in general, calling too much. I need to be just being more aggressive. I need to be betting and raising a little bit more. So now here is the Facebook discussion group. If any of you watching are not part of it yet, please go to it. It's smartpokerstudy.com slash discuss. Ask to join, join in the Facebook group. Um, there's a lot of people in it. We're doing, I don't know how many people, what have? 859 members, almost at 1,000. So yesterday, um, and then lots of people post and people respond to posts. It's, it's a very like nice, like cool group of people, you know? A lot of people helping each other out. Um, yesterday, this is what I posted in today's study session. I dove into some instances where I'm just playing too passively. I need to up my aggression and cut back on my passivity. Raise bet more often and call less or just fold. How do you, how do you all judge when to get aggressive? Let's pick just one particular spot to make this easy. We have a non-nut flush draw on the flop, out of position after being the sole caller in the big blind. If you get aggressive here, how do you do it? And what opponents are you looking to get aggressive against? Well, unfortunately, we just got one, one response from TJ. But I think TJ's response was such a good response that possibly people read it and said, hey, I'm down with TJ. So I'm not gonna respond myself, but let's see what he said. So the overall position is I'm out of position after calling pre-flop, but I flopped a non-nut flush draw. If I'm playing a non-nutted flush draw against only one other opponent, I have to take the risk that if I do hit the flush, that I have the best hand. There'd be no point in playing, say, two spades and hitting two spades on the flop to just fold them. I totally agree with that TJ. If there's any info on the player I'm in the hand with, it would really help my decision. If he's been playing aggressive, I'm likely to check, which is huge maybe, or check raise. Check, huge, maybe even all-in raising him. So he's gonna make a big check raise here with the non-nut flush draw against aggressive players. If he's playing passive or on a low stack and calling bets, I'm trying to get to the river as cheap as possible unless I hit the flush. If I hit the flush, I slow down by either checking or min-betting to attempt to look nervous by the draw and hopefully induce a bluff. And I said simply, me likes, thanks. Like TJ made the perfect response right here. These are the kinds of things that I need to be thinking about every time I hit that flush draw. How is my opponent playing? Is he aggressive? Great, let him bet, let me check raise to blow him off his hand because he's betting everything in this instance. If he's being passive, I can just check, try to get to that turn and the river cheaply in order to hit my flush and not expend any money on a bluff in that instance. So it makes total sense TJ, I love that. And then Thomas Gallagher said, hey, he agrees with TJ as well. So unfortunately, we didn't get any more replies. Maybe through the rest of the day today, we might get some replies. But um, yeah, let's see. But this is one way that you can do some studying. This is kinda like forum posting, you know? Posting in a Facebook group with people that you get to know. In forums, you often see, um, uh, you know, it's anonymous. You know, you see Joe Schmo 55, you don't know who he is. He could be just some random dude, he could be a pro, you know, responding to posts. Um, in Facebook groups, it's a little bit different because there's a little bit more accountability. You can create a total pseudonym, a total fake account of course. But a lot of people like TJ McNamara, McNamara, I'm assuming that's his real name. Thomas Gallagher, that is his real name. Me, that's my real name, you know? I'm an actual person there. Um, uh, uh, you know, responding in my, responding as myself, you know? I'm not just uh, you know, Joe Butt Nuts, that kind of a thing. Uh, just responding and saying crappy stuff. And if there are crappy responses, I've kicked out a couple people out of this group. Not too many though, because most people joining either don't say anything or they're pretty cool people. So if you want a place to go and to start discussing your hands, please join the group with us. Uh, so that is the, where do we go here? So that's that Facebook question from yesterday. And I just recommend getting in there, Facebooks and forums, just start posting stuff, you know? Get to know, uh, get to know other people and get some feedback on your game and your thoughts. So lesson learned right here, uh, from the Poker Tracker. Okay, so um, Ace Poker Solutions, oh, where'd they go? Okay, yeah, so free Poker Tracker filters, Ace Poker Solutions, they sell some programs and stuff. Um, I haven't actually used any myself, but I've taken a look at their site, they have some good stuff. But right here, they've got this Poker Tracker 4 Filter List. Uh, with all these different filters that, that they think, you know, they give out for free. They think these are good filters to help you dissect your game. So what I decided to do was, um, I didn't download any of these. What I did was, cuz you can right-click, save link as, and then, you know, save the, save the, save the filter and then import it into Poker Tracker 4. What I did was, I just took, took a look at this. They recommend this as a filter to look through your hands. Great, so I created right here... A list of these different filters. And I went, I made some modifications, but I'll go over that in just a sec. Let's do this, so we have, takes up less space. Okay, so I made some modifications to those, uh, because cold call, like I discussed, I don't remember when I discussed it, a few episodes ago or a few um, study sessions ago. Cold calling was, really isn't important to me. Sure, your cold call is just about the same as the two bet. The only time it makes a difference is if you're a limper or if you auto-post blinds. Most players don't auto-post, they wait for the big blind to come around before they put it in. Um, and then if you hit cold call, you aren't seeing any hands out of the blinds. What good is that when you're calling two bets or cold calling? Um, cold calling removes the blind hands, which you wanna see when you're calling the blinds, you know? If you want to see a specific position like just the button, you can easily filter for just button cold calls. Um, so these aren't, cold call itself isn't worth uh, filtering. I filter for two bet right here. So playing and facing a four bet, I have a facing a four bet filter. Cold call overall, you know, is the total two bet call. And then cold call with marginal hands is two bet call with marginal hands. So we have all these different filters here. I converted these to filters that make sense for me. I didn't just straight use these exactly. So um, uh, in yesterday's email, I put out the link for this page, but you can also just pokerleakerbuster, pokerleakbuster.com. Buster, every time I hear Buster, I think of uh, Trace Buster from the big hit. And the trace busta busta, and the trace busta busta busta. If you don't know that movie, it came out... 97, 95, 96, right around there, mid 90s. Great movie, Donnie Wahlberg, not Donnie, Mark Wahlberg of course. Um, the big hit, it's about assassins doing their assassin thing. And Jewish girlfriend and Jewish family, it's funny stuff. Uh, so anyway, getting back to this. So I took a look at those filters. I went through and I did all the filters within Poker Tracker 4. As well as I uh, saved them all as quick filters. So nice and simple here. So we can see facing a four bet, my quick filter. It's under F, right? Facing a four bet pre, bam, right here, 25 hands where I faced a four bet. it's under F, right, facing a four bet pre, bam, right here, twenty-five hands where I faced a four bet, how did I fare? Well, four hundred and thirty-nine big blinds per one hundred hands profit, uh, total two bet call, which is simply two bet, uh, where is it, two bet call pre, right there. So two hundred and twenty-seven at a negative fifty-eight big blinds per one hundred hands, this is an ugly one. Two bet call with marginal hands, let me show you this one in particular here, so marginal hands on the flop. So if we look at the filter itself, call two bet, great, and out of position as well, um, yeah, so call two bet marginal hands, out of position. You can see calling a two bet, out of position, and these are all of the marginal hands. So you could see, I took out of this ace ten suited or better, um, king ten suited or better, queen ten suited, so I, I took out all of the suited broadways. Um, ace king off, of course, is, is taken out, king queen off is as well. So I just removed a lot of the weaker hands, and let me show you how I do that real quick. Hand values, whole card range selection, this is what I did. I put all hundred hands and I said, well, what are the premium hands, you know? Um, so gotta take these ones out here, and everything else was marginal. You know, so that's basically what I did for a non, what is it, for marginal hands, so all of this stuff is marginal. Uh, some of them, sure, they're worth calling, uh, in some instances, but a lot of these just are not worth calling. And you shouldn't make a habit of always calling like queen seven suited, for example. So that's how I figured out my marginal hands, I added that to the filter, right there. So I came up with this, now we could see forty-nine hands, negative sixty big blinds, it's kind of ugly right here, forty-nine, negative sixty. Let's see. Two bet call with suited connectors. Okay, so I didn't create exactly a cold, uh, uh, I didn't create a quick filter for this one exactly. What I have is my two bet pre-flop, not two bet pre-flop, two bet call pre-flop, okay, so two bet call pre-flop, that filter comes up again. But if I want to see how I'm calling with suited connectors, for example, I'll go to more filters, edit quick filters, and I'll go to my hands. I have all these different hands, marginal hands, broadways, um, offsuit connectors, suited connectors, top five percent hands, right? So I add suited connectors right here, I go load filters, I append it to existing, so this existing filter, I'm just adding it to it, so calling two bet with suited connectors right here. Let's see how I do calling with suited connectors. So we're going from negative fifty-eight big blinds to negative fifty big blinds, so I'm doing slightly better with suited connectors, but still, this is a pretty ugly situation right here. I gotta figure out what is going on, am I calling too much and then just giving up too quickly on the flop? Should I be continuing, should I be check raising, should I be dong leading? Um, should I just not be calling these at all because they, uh, because they don't flop well? Because they're just too weak compared to my opponent's opening range? Uh, is my opponent so aggressive post-flop that I shouldn't be calling with speculative hands? Whatever the case is, this is something that I need to dive into to figure out what's going on, to reverse this negative trend and bring this back to positive, because if I'm losing every time I call suited connectors, I'm better off right now, if I would have folded every single one of these suited connectors, I would be at, um, cutoff an MP. I'd be at whatever the big blinds loss, so nineteen, six point five would be, uh, thirty-four point, or six point, twenty-four point five. I'd be at negative twenty-four point five big blinds loss, which is, um, about six dollars down, oh, so I'm actually doing a little bit better. So if you think about it, because you're folding the blinds every time, um, nineteen, nine, if I just fold this big blind, it'd be negative nineteen big blinds down, negative six point five, so negative twenty-five point five big blinds, and then zero big blinds loss, so negative twenty-five point five, twenty-five point five times point two five, six dollars in thrice, so I would have lost six thirty-eight, but I'm actually down five twenty-six, so my suited connector play is better than not playing those at all. So that's an interesting little concept to think about right there. Uh, let's see here. Let's make a note of that, because that's actually pretty cool, um. Because of the, I don't know what to call that right now, because of the losing blinds factor. Yeah. Possibly, so right now, even though that is a negative number, um, it's a, hmm, small importance. I was gonna, I'm gonna rank these in just a minute, but yeah, that's small importance. So calling the, the offsuit connectors now. Two bet call free with, okay, so we want to keep this one in, delete that. Now I have a hands offsuit connectors right here, load it, append, great, so calling two bet offsuit connectors now. Save and apply, we're at a negative two hundred and thirty-five, now that is a big difference right there. So eleven hands, negative two thirty-five, eleven, negative two thirty-six, yeah, rounded up. Uh, so that's really bad, if I would have just folded all of these hands, I would be at, uh, negative five plus two, negative seven big blinds, which is, uh, just a dollar seventy-five, but I'm down six forty-eight, so this is a big leak. But here's the thing, it's only eleven hands, and it's a quick fix, don't call them anymore. Actually, I'm gonna make a note of that, because that is a super quick fix right here. Action step, number one. Don't call offsuit connectors, if I would have, if I would do that over the next eleven hands where I have the opportunity to, I would be, um, I'd be better off, much better off right there, yep. Good, so that's really quick and simple action step, let's see, what's the next one? Hey, good morning Vader, good to see ya. So let's see here, what do we got, um, two bet call offsuit, oh, check raise flop with less than top pair. Now this is a really interesting filter, this is one I talked about the other day, um, and then when I finally figured out how to frickin' do it. Um, it's, it's pretty, it's a little eye opening, it doesn't happen too much, right, check raise without or with less than two pair. Um, uh, let me see here, if we go to more filters, okay. So first, so you're check raising, of course, right, so the first flop action is a check, and the second action is a raise, check raise. You have to go through and individually select all of these different hands, so you have to go through the two pair, da-da-da, select it all, and then hit not, let me show you what that looks like. Hand values, made hands, uh, we want to look at less than two pair, right? So when you go to two pair, two pair on the flop, any two pair, any two pair, and you add that to the filter. I'll delete it in just a sec, but you add that to the filter, you highlight it and hit not. So basically, you do not have two pair on the flop, whether it's one card or two whole cards, you don't have it. So that's how you do it, but you have to go back and you have to do that for all of the made hands, two, three, da-da-da, all the way through straight flush, do them all. And then once you do that, you'll have all of them, you highlight each one, hit not, 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 not for all of them. And then you save and apply filter, bam, there's your check raise flop with less than two pair right there. So you can see, things are just not good, let's take a look real quick. Um, seven at negative twelve hundred, it's not a lot of instances, so one thing I should do is just not check raise, this is another action step. Don't check raise flop without good drawing equity. This is just the kind of first idea, so let's take a look at this big loser, ace seven. Well, there's one of my problems right there, calling a three bet pre out of position with a weak ace. I know that he is capable of three betting wide, I should have folded or come in with a four bet, for sure, right there. I screwed that up, but let's see what happens, so I have almost no equity, backdoor straight draw with a nine-ten, the under straight draw. He could be doing this pocket queens, ace queen, king queen, uh, queen jack even for trips right now. He has plenty of queens that if the nine and the ten come, I'm not going to be confident in my hand, obviously not. Uh, so he decides to bet, and it's a small bet on a chicken board, so I decide, of course, to check raise. But he's just not going to believe me. Crap, and then the king doesn't do anything, so I should, if I don't have a made hand, I should be check raising with more equity outs. And what equity outs are, are cards on the turn that can help my equity, so let's take a look right here. Uh, good, drawing equity, many equity outs, so let's take a look at Flopzilla, so, um, well. Clear all fields, good, so we have the ace seven of spades, right? Let's just give him, because he three bet, let's just give him a rather tighter range, right here. Doesn't matter, let's just look at it, so a lot of equity outs would be a hand, for example, um, five, six, seven. Not, oh, ace seven's a bad, it's actually a bad idea, let's go ten-nine suited of spades. Good, there we go, so on this kind of flop, sure, we only have thirty percent, right? But we're trying to get aggressive to push him off of his hand, well, if we're check raising the flop, we want to have many, hmm, many cards that come on the turn that add equity to our hand, that allow us to barrel, uh, barrel the turn, so. Oh, I need to put one more card out, um, let's just say it's a random ten, right there, good, so we could take a look here, um, at the hotness chart, red hands equals a hundred percent equity for the hand. So in this instance, any spade, we're in love with any spade, any ten, of course, now we have trips, any nine, great, we have two pair, which beats all of his overpairs, and any eight or seven adds kind of a gut shot to our hand as well. So any spade, any ten, any nine, any eight, any, any seven, we like all those, we have five different equity outs. That's not, that doesn't mean we have five outs to make our hand, it's different, I, I call them equity outs, their hands, or their cards that can come that add equity to us, so you want to be, um, you want to be check raising when there's a lot of cards that can come, that can add equity, that allows you to do another double barrel again, to put the pressure on it because you picked up some additional draws or you made your hand. That's what equity outs are, right there. So if we're check raising, we want to be check raising with just, uh, if it's not a made hand, equity outs for sure. We don't want to just straight bluff, uh, unless we're doing so out of position, then it's a raise, I'm sorry, in position, then it's a raise as opposed to a check raise. Many equity outs on the turn that add draws or make all, our hand, alright. So now these are just quick action steps without actually going through these various leaks, just finding a leak and then assessing, hey, what can I do to kind of stop this leak? Uh, so let's check raise flop with less than top pair, called raise on flop with top pair, top kicker. Okay, so I'm good, doing good right there, oh, uh, yeah. Called raise on the flop, top pair, top kicker, eight hundred and forty-three, did I record that? Yeah, I did, good, three bet non-premium hands now, let's take a look at this one. Three bet pre with less than ace queen in tens, so non-premium hands right here, uh, nine hundred and fifteen. Oh, no, this is, yeah, yeah, okay, so nine hundred and fifteen, doing good right there. Uh, let's see. Three bit premium, three bet squeeze with non-premium hands, let's take a look at this. Three bet squeeze with non-premium hands, so we could see, it's four instances where negative eighteen hundred big blinds per one hundred. Um, so that's not, that's not a good win rate, obviously, that's hurting our win rate big time. Let's see, called three bit, oh, that's a call three bet. Oh, so that's what we looked at, our third bit call pre. Oh, three bit pre non-premium hands, that's the one we, from the prior one, okay. Fifty-nine instances, a hundred and eighteen, so non-premium hands are not aces, ace, king, kings, queens, or jacks, non-premium, tens, I wouldn't say tens are premium, and ace queen really isn't premium either. So that's the top of our non-premium range, so when I'm three betting with these hands, things are looking good. Fifty-nine hands, and I'm taking advantage, doing a lot of semi bluffing and bluffing here. Um, a hundred and eighteen big blinds, a hundred and nineteen big blinds per one hundred hands, which is a pretty good win rate. We saw that one, we saw that was that first one that we looked less than ace queen, calling three bets with less than ace queen in tens. What about four betting with less than ace queen in tens? Oh, we're doing really good here, five hands at thirty-three hundred big blinds per one hundred hands win rate. That's good, so we're making some good, uh, uh, four bet bluffs in this instance, so you can see ace ten offsuit. Pocket nines, which is a bluff, oftentimes, we don't, uh, you know, for four betting with nines, it's because we think our opponent is three betting light. Six, and then he shoves, oh, big ant. I only have two hands on the guy, but I recall this hand, I think he was just pushing around an unknown, that was the feeling that I got. Um, and that he could be doing this, this with ace, king, ace, queen, pocket eights and below. Of course, he's doing it with his other pairs, but I felt that such a big raise, five X my four bet. I felt that that was just a straight bluff, I had the better hand at the time. Um, maybe technically, if we look at it in Flopzilla, maybe I should have folded this hand instead of four betting, but I felt that this was a really good instance because I didn't have an ace. And many people's three bet ranges are suited and offsuit aces, because, hey, I have an ace, that makes it less likely he has pocket aces or ace, king, ace, queen, I should three bet to get him to fold. That was my thinking here, so when I four bet, um, I'm thinking to myself, you know, there's no way, I've already put a quarter of my stack in. There's no way that, that he is making this raise with aces and kings or queens even, he could be doing it with tens and jacks, possibly queens, um, tens and jacks to get me to fold, but I took my chances right here, and, uh, I remember, I, I was right. I hit a set as well, which helps, but he had ace, king in this hand. Yep, ace, king, and then so, um, it was just a spot, an instance of taking advantage of another player's, the type of plays that, the loose aggressive players that these stakes make. I didn't know that he was a loose aggressive at this point, I just kind of assumed he was, so, uh, maybe it was a bad assumption on my part, but whatever. And so right now, I'm doing good, uh, when it comes to four betting, let's take a look. King, queen, king, eight, good, making some good money. And king, jack, good, I've won all five of these hands when it comes to four betting, so things are going well with, with less than ace, queen in tens. And if we want to just look at four betting in general, uh, twenty-one hands, you know, got some aces, kings and stuff in here, doing really good, four betting wise. So let's look at triple barrel bluff now. Now this is an interesting one. One thing interesting is it comes back with no hands, so let's look at the filter. River, oh, um, overcards, river, any overcard, so if you're triple barrel bluffing, you probably don't have a pair. I could look at, I could change this to be like second pair, um, at any time, you know, second or third pair kind of a thing. But it's basically any flop, any turn, any river bet in succession right there, without a made hand is what this is looking at. Let's change this filter real quick and select. Hmm, let's do one pair hands, let's take a look if I ever triple barrel bluffed with, on any street, uh, middle pair. Let's see if that changes anything. Oh, good, positive right there, so out of four instances, lost with pocket threes, triple barrel bluffed, ten-nine, pocket kings, one, queen, jack, I won, good. Let's see about something even less than, uh, less than a middle pair. A lower pair, let's see if I triple barrel bluffed any of those. Oh, the same instances, so it didn't come back with any more being a lower pair. Um, obviously, it wouldn't, I guess, because it's a wider, it's a wider net than just middle pair. No, yeah, it could have, it could have come back with less, that's right, yeah, so even here, for instance, um, uh, same hands, same hands came back, so actually, let's go ahead, triple barrel bluff with, uh, mid pair. Four instances at nine hundred and nineteen, positive win rate, that's good. What's the last one here, triple barrel, float flop without draw, float flop without draw. Flop float, uh, flip the words, flop float without a draw, okay, so there's only one instance here, um, of me actually floating, let's take a look at it. Okay, it's not a great hand, but the guy's so wide, I have an ace, I probably should have three bet bluffed here, but decided to call instead. So I have two overs, nothing on the flop, the guy c bets a decent amount, two out of three, or six out of nine, you know, so that's pretty good. Uh, he's definitely doing this, this with weak hands, a check raise could have been good here, but I decided to float the flop. What happens on turn, I hit my ace, so I check, he bets, hmm, check call. Queen, and I just kind of figured that he doesn't have an ace, if he does, um, I beat a lot of his aces, ace ten, nine, seven, five, four, and deuce. I beat all those, if he does have the ace, and then he could also be just, um, running a, uh, I guess a triple barrel with like pocket jacks or tens even, that kind of a thing. Gut shot, wow, able to do that on the river, interesting. In position, triple barrel with less than top pair, good kicker, later triple barrel bluff with turned flush draw. That, that was it right there, I made that note right there, so he is capable of later to, uh, in position, right there, I want to make a note of that. Because you gotta know, uh, whether they can do it in position or out of position too. Good, 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 so that was that one, so now that we have, we've gone through all of these filters, which, which of these filters is the leak that I really need to work on? And I would say obviously that it is calling two bet pre, this is of number one importance, two hundred and twenty-seven hands, a huge hit to my win rate, if I can improve that would be good. But I think what I would want to do in this instance is I would want to improve it bit by bit. So calling two bet pre is one big category, but where am I making my biggest mistakes? Is it calling with marginal hands, is it calling with suited connectors, um, as we know, it's not, obviously. But the different types of hands that I'm calling, uh, just why are they, you know, and then calling in position versus out of position as well. So we can, we can dive in and just dig a little bit deeper, so the first thing here is figure out if, uh, two bet calling pre in position versus out of position is worst. It's going to be out of position, of course, so let's do that real quick. Uh, two bet calling pre-flop, so in general, fifty-eight big blinds, negative two hundred and twenty-seven hands, things are ugly right here, let's narrow this down. In position. In position calling, so it's of course button, cutoff an MP, and then the big blind, uh, and you could see, we're positive in position. Uh, and you could see we're positive in position. Great. So it's obviously out of position. That's our big issue. Oh yeah, I want to do this first right here. So 140 hands at a negative 49 big blind win rate. I would say this is the most important one right here. Very, but then this is the number one of importance, calling out of position. Now, let's take a look right here. Suited, suited. So those are some of the big losses right there. King, four. So it looks like just straight suited big cards could be my big issue. Um, suited connector right here. All these pretty type cards and all. So let's go ahead and break this down. Let's go with suited big cards right here. So more filters. Add a filter. Uh, let's look at some of the weaker suited big cards. Let's go all the offsuit broadways, or I mean suited. Suited big cards, non-Broadway. That's what I mean to say. Uh, let's just take a look at the jacks as well. Okay, suited big cards. Non-Broadway right there. Negative 200, so 17 hands. It's a small sample, but man, I am losing a ton of money here. You can see it's all the suited kings, queens, jacks. Yeah, sure. Some of them I made, but look at that, queen, nine suited. I made, uh, uh, eight big blinds, but that doesn't anywhere near compensate for all these other hands where I just called and lost something, you know? So this is, this is actually now my number one, even more granular focus. 17 hands at negative 279 big blinds. This is number one. Whoops, let's go to one and then go one. Granular. So this is our number one leak right now to work on. Um, uh, number one leak to work on with, uh, uh, taken down to its smallest bit, the granular part right here. So, cause this is such a huge part. So it's, it's 17 hands out of 140 right here. So it's about 10% of our hands. Let's actually, just in case it's not, let's take a look here. Um, that does make up. So with these hands, it was negative $12. Let's take that out. 17. So the $12. So these hands, these hands I'm talking about right here with the suited biggies. Um, the, this takes up 71% of these losses right here. So it's only 10%, little over 10% of hands, but it's 70% of my losses. Figure out. Most granular leak is, um, with suited big cards, king, deuce. Uh, no, hmm, I know what suited big cards are. That's fine. Uh, out of position, called a two bet pre. Yep, 70%. Was it 13%? 12%? There we go. So what I talk about in the book is the, um, uh, the 80/20 principle, uh, or the Pareto principle. You know, 80% of our results come from 20% of our work, or you could look at it conversely. Um, you know, 20% of the things we do matter the most and give us 80% of results. Well, in this instance, if we look at the 80/20 rule, it's pretty close, you know? Um, 80% of my losses come from 20% of hands played. It's not exact, but the 80/20 rule just gives you a good idea, a good general, um, uh, frame of reference for this kind of stuff. So this is 80/20 rule in action right here. 80/20 rule is in effect. If I'm able to, um, fix this leak and it's only 17 hands I'm talking about in a very specific situation. If I'm able to fix this leak, I'm going to take away 70% of my losses in the future when it comes to two bet calling out of position right here. So this is the most important thing right now that I need to study. If I can fix this leak, it's going to make a world of difference to my gameplay. And so what I need to do is start going through, um, not these hands. And actually what I'm going to do is definitely, because this is so important, I definitely want to come back to it in the future. So I will save it as a quick filter. Not the tens. Tens could be a big part of it too. I can, this is what I'll do real quick, just to show you before we end this study session. Um, I will add the tens and see how that changes, but my guess tens won't add much. Uh, it might actually, it might actually improve because I, I fold tens readily, but I might be calling a lot of 10, nines and 10 eights, which could flop a little bit better. Um, possibly, we'll have to see. So add this to filter. Save as a quick filter. So this is two bet call with marginal hands out of position on flop. So let's call it two bet, call with suited biggies out of position on flop. So we're back to the negative 278, 17 hands. So about 12% of hands account for 70% of losses. Eek. Let's add real quick, like I said, let's add the tens, see what happens. Uh, do, let's see if that changes. I'm not going to save this one. So, um, 17, negative $12. Did I do something wrong? Okay. Just combine them right here. What is happening? I didn't change much. Called, out of position, and I have these hands. Oh, maybe combining hands doesn't work like that. So for some reason, maybe, yeah, combining hands. What a bummer. But this is the kind of thing you learn as you go. Let's add all this stuff back in here. It's a bummer. You can't click and then drag, can't hold down click and drag. So gotta do it all like that. Add to filter. So we saw, oh, it was 17 and negative, 17 hands, negative 12, negative 11 dollars or so. Let's see what happens here. 19 hands and not as bad. So we tacked on, that was already there. We tacked on some winners here with the 10, nine, where we won 374. Okay. So we added one suited 10 where we lost, where we won, one where we lost. Suited 10. Okay. So overall, by adding that hand in, we added some winning stuff. So that's not the big problem. The big problem is the big cards, jacks are better, uh, being suited. So that's where I need to work for sure. So I got that note. That's what I need to work on. I need to make, uh, like for example, an action note could be, do not call out of position in the blinds versus two bets with, uh, suited big cards unless connected. So let's take a look real quick. Let's filter this for just the suited connected big cards. Um, whoops. About time to end this, but let's go back. Add to filter. And so as you're studying, this is the kind of stuff you'll do constantly, going back and forth, hitting the filters, figuring stuff out for sure. So the, the suited connector, so, uh, these were the worst ones right here, or were the suited, you know, big cards. Um, and really, I mean, we could just say suited one gapper right here. Let's just say suited, the suited nines are all that we want to call with. Let's leave this one out. Uh, because we know that that was a beneficial hand. So let's say that the suited nine is the best one right here. Add to filter, save and apply filters. Yeah, it's not as bad. We're still losing, but not as bad. So I would say even that, don't even call with any of these hands. Let's take a look at what hands were profitable, uh, with suited biggies. Let's look at hand by hand here. So we got our whole cards. We'll break them down by pos- Oh yeah, good. So what was this one hand? That one hand is an ace, three. I made a pretty good, but in this instance, look at that, I probably flopped, yeah. I got super lucky on the flop to hit trip. How often does that happen? If we don't know how often that happens, clear all fields here. Ace, three suited. How often do you hit three of a kind or better? One, two, about 2.5% of the time, 2.6, 2.7% of the time. Actually we can find out exactly. 2.6% of the time we hit trips or better. Uh, that just, that means you need, um, you need 50X behind the bet. So for example, uh, implied odds, you actually probably need 70 or 80X because sometimes you don't hit your trips, you don't get any value. Um, so yeah, it's just, it's not a good thing. You don't, you don't want to ever rely on hitting trips. Uh, hitting flush draws though, if you, if you want to hit a flush draw, sure. You hit trips or better and a flush draw 14% of the time. So if you have like 10 or 15X behind, uh, in the, in the stacks behind, that's enough implied odds to try to play the ace, three suited. But at the same time, it's just, it's really a losing hand in general. Let's take a look at, say, look at this other one here. So ace, two suited loser, ace, five suited, king, nine. Now it could be a function of me playing these hands as well. But when you look at them, these hands just really aren't strong. If, you know, if you, if I would have told you, hey, I got to the flop with jack, nine suited, out of position against a two bet. What do you think of my odds? You're going to say, nah, you don't have good odds. You probably should fold unless you hit that flop really well. Which I hit the flush draw and I just play it passively and call down, hit my flush, get raised and he has a better flush. I mean, it's just not a good situation to be in. So for right now, until I go through all of these hands and figure out if I'm playing poor post flop or if I'm just flopping bad, or if the hands are weak, what I should be doing is do not call in the blind, blinds with two bets with suited biggies. That's it right there. Just do not do it. If I would have not done that, sure. I'd be missing out on, on this much profit, which isn't much, and I'd be missing out on that profit right there. But I wouldn't have suffered those $12 in losses. I'd be suffering just, uh, uh, s- basically 16 blinds, which is four bucks. I'd be down four bucks as opposed to 12 bucks. Yeah. So right now, before going through those hands, these are my action steps to do in my next session. So I'll be taking with these with me to the felt next hand for, or next session for sure. Alrighty, well, hey Dom, how's it going? Sorry buddy, I think you just joined, but, um, I'm, I'm just about to end. But this video, you can watch the replay on it. We went through, um, a various set of leaks and I figured out which is the most important leak to tackle right now. And then I got granular on that leak and I figured out exactly where, uh, according to the 80/20 principle, where the worst, uh, where the worst leaks are coming from. Alrighty. So thank you very much everybody for joining me today and for watching this after the fact. I appreciate it and I'll catch you on the flip side.